Welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting of Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
A motion.
Got a motion to suspend the rules by George Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Felix Skynes. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Will you read the revisions, please?
Hello? Excuse me. To our consent agenda, we're removing item 5B, Resolution Amending the Budget. We're substituting item 5M, which is a resolution concerning a quote for the Station 7 gym equipment. Substituting item 5R, Resolution Authorizing Amendment to Archaeological Remote Sensing and Monitoring Agreement. And we're adding item 5J, Resolution to Approve In-Kind Support to the East Biloxi Collaborative for the Wade Inn Memorial Commemoration. Excuse me.
Thank you, Lucy. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? I had a motion to accept the agenda as amended by George Lawrence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Felix Skynes. Any discussion? All in favor, please signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We have John Prentis to come present some information on our audit. But before, I'd like to welcome everyone to this. It seems like we're getting back to somewhat normal as far as the audience, and we do welcome everybody here. Again, there's, you know, as we recover, we're watching numbers as far as coronavirus, looking at that 14-day average, we're seeing some bumps, but the, again, we remain, the hospital systems are not overwhelmed, and everyone, we're encouraging everyone to wear masks when, in those situations. But every day is a challenge when it comes to trying to keep this thing managed. So I think 99% of the people are, have, they get it, and the 1% seems to frustrate a lot of folks. So we'll, we'll stay on top of that. But I do, John, if you're ready to come talk a little bit about the audit, and over to you. I think it's on.
Thank you, Council, for having me here today. I want to announce, first of all, this audit is 99% complete. We're waiting on one item from the Utility Authority for when they complete their audits, and once we have their completed audit, we can drop those numbers in. If you'll look at page 68 and 69, that's what we lack before we can issue a final audit. But other than that, we've completed all of our work, and examined the city's finances, and put together a report for you here. I will say upfront that there are no findings in either the federal findings or in the financial statements as a whole. What we would like to do after this, I would like to take you over to the, to the budgetary report, and that's going to be on page 72. These are your cash basis financial numbers. This has your original budget, your final amended budget, and then your actual numbers for the year. You'll see in your revenues that you started off with a budget of $58 million in revenue. You amended that upward to 59, and you ended up finishing the year with $60 million in revenues. So that was a positive for the year on revenues. You budgeted conservatively, and you exceeded the budgeted amount. On your expenditures, from the next page, on 73, you'll see that expenditures were budgeted to be 62 million. You did revise it upwards of 64 million, but because of some other measures that took place or expenditures that had to be put off, you ended up with expenditures of 60 million 214,000. So for the year, you ended with a positive number of 165,992. So that's a good thing, that you did not spend beyond your budgeted capacity, and you did not go down in general fund. Your general fund fund balance on the cash basis went from 18 million 319 to 18 million 497. So for the year, that's pretty good. It's right on target, I would say. The concern would be, were you putting off some expenses, or was anything put into the wrong period? And we went to the accrual basis, and that's presented on page 26. You have your governmental funds. Now, that's presented on the modified cash basis, where we accrue your revenues, we accrue any expenditures that are outstanding at September 30th. And on that basis, you finished the year up 422,000 just on operations. And then when we factored in your other financing, that's transfers in and out from other funds and any other leases that were obtained, you finished the year up in the general fund by 466,000. So your end-of-the-year fund balance on the modified cash approach is 15 million 317. So that's another positive result for the year. Now, the other thing that I would like you to take note of is page 22. Those are your government-wide financials. Now, the government-wide is on a full accrual basis. We accrue your pension liabilities, we accrue your compensated absences that have not been paid, we accrue everything. It's a full accrual basis of accounting. We also, on this basis of accounting, include your fixed assets as an asset on the books. And for the year, your governmental activities, you finished the year with, on the governmental activity basis, 414 million in assets. And that's all your streets, all of your roads, all of your buildings in the city. That's everything included there. And also, you ended the year with $26 million cash balance in your governmental activities. Now, that 26 million consists of everything, so that includes any of your capital project money, your debt service funds. So you don't have 26 million to spend, but you're in a comfortable position to meet your obligations. So you have enough cash to meet your obligations. And similarly, in your business activities, that's your water sewer, your port commission, you've got 8 million, 8.4 million in cash, and then another 1.6 million restricted cash. So you've got enough to meet your obligations there. Overall, for the year, you ended with about 37 million in cash between all governmental and business-type activities. Beyond that, we didn't have anything that we noted that was a problem in the city during the course of our audit. The only issues that, that we encountered was out of your control. We, you lost your Director of Finance in the middle of our audit, so we had to juggle and make sure that we had everything, but everything worked out in the end. You've got a, you've got a decent staff over there that got us what we needed and was able to help us and get us through the audit. Other than that, there were no issues, and we had no findings. Are there any questions?
John, was there any exceptions? Did you find any?
No exceptions that we found that would give rise to findings. Anytime you go into an audit, there's always going to be little things that you might find here and there, but nothing that would cause us to look further, having further concerns.
All right. So I'll put you on the spot in your professional opinion. Is this a A report card?
I'm a harsh grader. I'm a harsh grader.
I know you are.
But I would say it's, it's, it's close to an A. It's borderline A/B. We can always do things better. That's why I'm not a teacher.
Are there, are there? Councilman Tisdale?
You as well.
Before you leave the desk, would you state your name and your position for the transcript record?
I'm sorry. I'm John Prentis. I'm one of the directors at Phillips Williams LaRosa &amp; Company, and we're located here in Biloxi at 1077 Tommy Monroe Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else?
That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That'll take us to the council reports. Mike, did you have something?
I would say, Mr. Mayor, if I was Mr. Mayor, I would remind you about page two.
A what?
Is a one-page summary of the year, just for your reading at some other time.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. We'll move on to council reports. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes. Couple of things. Number one, I'm concerned about the litter, and I've heard from some folks that are concerned about the litter just throughout the city and just being out and about. Since we've loosened things up with this virus situation, the litter is worse than ever, and it's a, you know, it's a never-ending problem. Can we do anything more than what we're doing now with the resources we have to deal with litter any better than we are now?
Yeah, I'm sure we can reallocate, but you know, we're struggling with the, ending the year. But no, you're right. You know, we're trying to get back to normal, and of course, you know, the cleanliness and it's sort of, you know, the beauty and attraction of our city to the, we'll double our efforts to see what we can do immediately.
The next thing is, we had a number of signs that vendors, either for events or businesses, post along the roadway in the city's right-of-way. Going out of business, we finally had a business, a furniture store, that did actually close, I think. Is that right, Mr. Creel? After six or seven weekends of these signs popping up, but now there are, sometimes there are events associated with the Coliseum, and at tax time, we get these down by the intersections on Highway 90 and on Eisenhower Drive, Long Pass Road there, and Switzer Drive, just because all the traffic going to and from them, all that area, and then Beauvoir Road. Can we start binding these people or do it, taking more stringent action, because it's just, it's aggravating?
The first, you know, move, as we notified, I think code enforcement will go out and pick those signs up. Is that not right, Your Honor? Yeah, so, when it, when it's come to our attention, I think we've got a plan, but you know, still, we need to be vigilant on that.
And they do. I'm not knocking code enforcement. I just would like to see us, push us a little more, because until somebody's paying for these transgressions, I don't know that they're, how seriously they're taking it. But that's all, just an observation and a comment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Newman?
So the Broadwater development is actually in my ward, and I'm not commenting on the resolution itself, but I am letting you know that I've been getting numerous phone calls from constituents and especially the business owners around there. They're, everyone is ecstatic that there's actually some talk that something's going to be done with the Broadwater property after a decade, and it's actually going to help a lot with the homeless issue that we have over there. A lot of businesses have been suffering. Like I told you a couple of meetings ago, they were calling, what are we going to do? You know, they're not making it, especially with the homeless issue and then COVID. And so I'm excited that at least we're talking about something happening at the Broadwater finally.
Let me comment too, if you don't mind, ma'am. The, we met, there's actually 23 camps on that Broadwater property. And, you know, some, some private individuals have volunteered to go there and help, and I think you will have noticed that a lot of trash has been picked up along, at least on Pass Road, and there was an effort, and met with the property owner as well as some of these, these interested folks. So, but it is, you know, an issue right now, and, you know, we need to have a solution, you know, in the county or in the city, somewhere. So they know, they're well aware of those camps and that we need to do something about it, and I think, you know, but it will enable us to, to address that. But there are actually 23 camps on that site. Thank you.
That concludes your report. Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, as y'all can tell, this weekend was an extremely busy weekend for the city of Biloxi. We had the blessing, we had the Billfish Tournament, we had the Rock and Roll Car Show. Kenny said if I got any more people down on the corner, it would suck. It was awesome. But we was all socially distant. Well, a little bit. We're close enough. It was big groups. But it was awesome to see that many people.
We could use a little bit more parking on Highway 90, too.
Say again?
We need a little bit, little bit more parking on Highway 90, because they were parked in place. I knew what I thought.
You need to get rid of that grass and sand, and you put concrete. Concrete sidewalks, all up and down. You gotta have way more parking. You gotta work on that. You know, we don't need the boardwalk, we need concrete everywhere. No maintenance once you do that. But anyway, that's, that's something else we'll deal with. But it was just really great to see as many people out and about in the city of Biloxi, downtown, all the restaurants had waiting lines. So it's good. You know, we're not going to come back and caught what we missed from all this shutdown, but it's a good thing. It's time to step back up, get on the world, and let's live at where we at right now. But, because I'll tell you what, if they say it's true, the coronavirus don't live in the beaches and the water, where we killed a bunch of coronavirus this weekend, because all this thing was outside, and it was all packed, so our council will really be down. Because they were to count, if you pay attention, the hospitalization is not there. And that's how you run the numbers. The numbers is actually one less than it was June 10th. There's 98 on the ventilators, 160 people in ICU. And June 10th, it was 99 and 160. So having more cases really doesn't mean anything. It's the hospitalization. And we have plenty of ventilators, there are a lot of people in the hospitals, there's some in Memorial, I think there's one in Merritt Health, and then they had seven, eight, I believe, in Gulfport. So we still got plenty of rooms, so there's no problem, no reason to panic. Everything's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Barrett?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to check and see if you knew where we were on the Wool Market Center as far as the punch list for that.
There are two things left to be done. One is the landscaping. That's, we've got a guy giving us some quotes. And the other one is the parking lot, which, as you know, the county has agreed to do. We've met with the county out there, and they're planning that job now.
Okay.
I don't have a schedule, but I know that their road manager has walked it with our guys, and their schedule and the work.
Okay, so once those two things are done, we'll be?
We can open.
Business. Okay, good deal. Second thing is, I did talk to Casey again yesterday. He called me actually just to verify the amount, and we are, that actually passed on the, for the additional funding for Eagle Point Park. So that's, that's a go. And then, and I talked to Peter the other day about this, and I brought it up a few weeks ago in one of our meetings about the piers in Orange Beach, and how, you know, we had the storm, and we had the floating piers and things. I have some pictures of that, and I think that we should look into that on our piers in Biloxi to, to keep it from, piers from floating away when we have any kind of surge come in. It allows the water flow through the pier instead of pushing the boards up. And even if we just do it on the parts that have to be repaired, and over a period of time do that, I think in the long run, it would save us a lot of money and heartache. It'll just allow us the water to flow through the top of the pier instead of pushing the boards off. So just something we should look at.
Let me, let me, I comment, you know, we rebuilt it hundreds of thousands of dollars. FEMA reimbursed. With FEMA and MEMA, you cannot put anything over and above what you had before. So you had to replace it as is. So that was a problem prior to Katrina, and Georgias and all of them. So, you know, either, certainly, if you, if you note the couple of piers, we have Forest Avenue as well as the boardwalk under the I-110, Highway 90, did not lose one board because of the concrete structure and a heavier decking. So certainly, I mean, we'd, we'd entertain that. But if, you know, if reimbursement is not a problem, you know, if we can do it on our own nickel, then certainly we would do that, but it certainly would pay for itself in the long haul. And we're all on board on that.
All right. And the last thing is, I got several, over the weekend, I got several, several more calls on the speeding on Hudson Cron Road, right there in that area, just south of Waste Management. I probably got five or six calls and emails on that over the weekend, and they just said that it's getting worse and worse. And so if we can just maybe put an officer out there and run some radar and try to slow them down or something, I know that we put some signage up out there, but whatever we can do to help, help those people out, those, those houses are real close to the road, and they have little kids and stuff, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett. Councilman Skynes?
Yes, I wanted to first thank the mayor. We dedicated some restrooms in Henry Beck Park, so appreciate you coming out, Biloxi Bay Chamber of Commerce and all the support in the community. What a beautiful park we have. We also have three big events coming up this weekend, and we want to make sure that they are safe. Juneteenth organizers, we're giving away 150,000 masks, 1,500 masks out to the public for that. And organizers for the Wade Inn, we gave out 1,500 masks also. So we applaud both of those groups for having safety in mind. We're hoping for a good turnout on the Unity March. We're having a Unity March Saturday at 9:00, starting at the Town Green, ending up here at Sea Hall. Anyone who wants a mask, they can pick them up at the visitor center, and they will be readily available that day. And of course, the important thing is to wear them. I want to ask, I have a young lady in the audience, her name is Patricia Tatum. I'm going to ask her to come up. She wanted to personally thank the chief, and, and I also thank him for taking care of our community this weekend, and there was a lot of heartfelt gestures from the police department, and we just want to let them know how much we appreciate our police department.
My name is Patricia Tatum. I am the grandmother of the young man that was shot and killed in Gulfport about two weeks ago, May 31st. And I just wanted to come in today to acknowledge Chief Miller and his awesome staff for the service that was rendered in covering my grandbaby's funeral, as well as covering our area with the turnout and potential things that was possibly to happen. It was an awesome turnout. I mean, just a big applause to the, to Biloxi, Mississippi, and various fraternities, and sororities, and churches, and the Biloxi Public School District. Everyone was just awesome. But I just wanted to tell you, thank you, Chief Miller. Thank you very much.
I guess I don't need to say nothing after that. Thank you again, chief. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Skynes. Councilman Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by just holding this mask up, compliments of Felix Skynes, I think he had someone made it. And I'm going to say a few things, and I'm not really joking about anything. Black masks matter. Black lives matter. Blue lives matter. And all lives matter. And Biloxi, I hope, is a beacon toward making that happen and getting that a little closer in these times that we're in. And going back to Felix's kind of testimony or what he shared with us years ago, what happened to him was touching to me, and I've shared it with my family and hoping that they'll learn and maybe understand somewhat. You know, I know we're all trying to understand things, and that's the opportunity in all, all this strife and friction as we kind of find a way to mend what is happening. And so I just wanted to begin with that. On my council report, a couple of code enforcement issues, I've reported these, but I just wanted, is there any update on Wetzel or Thelma? Any update on those two projects? Or they, they've been investigated and it's ongoing right now? Okay. Thank you for that. I also got a report, I know this falls under the tenant, I think it's lease premises, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but the tennis courts at Sports Biloxi, Biloxi Sports Blocks, a lot of the banners got, and screening and everything got damaged out there. I've had some of the folks that use the tennis courts ask if Biloxi can help getting some of that repaired or looked at at least. Shouldn't be that expensive. They claim, I haven't played tennis in a while, that it helps, it's like the, the black eye or whatever they call it, what's the thing at the park, when they, they can pick up the ball or whatever, it's same thing with the tennis. They say it gives them contrast and helps them not get hit in the face with the tennis ball.
Batter's eye.
That's right, batter's eye. And then on Pelican Bayou, I'll get the specific address, I just got this call before I came in here, but there's a resident, and there's a drainage ditch that he's kind of trimmed up and cut, and it looks pretty good. Looks the best I've ever, that it's ever seen, but he's asking, is there any way the county or city can provide some erosion control with some rocks or something? It's caving in a little bit and filling up, but he said he doesn't mind maintaining it. But after he cut away all the brush and everything, he noticed that there was some rocks there. And I don't know if that's riffraff from the subdivision being developed, or that was actually an attempt to control the erosion. But if y'all would look in that, to that, I know you got a lot of stuff on your plate, but if you can look at it when you can. And I'm going to make one comment about what's happening here with the tourism industry. We got a call the other day from the Navy, and it was the ship, I believe it's Tripoli, it just got commissioned at Ingalls not too long ago in February or March, and there's 800 to 900 sailors that are going to be on that ship. They're cleaning it up and sanitizing it, and they're looking for 800 to 900 hotel rooms from June 30th to July 16th. I believe they approached the boat, the boat's doing well, I don't think they could accommodate them, so they were looking for other hotels. We have 600 rooms in our portfolio, we can only give them 80 because of our occupancy over that period of time. I found out today they're going to New Orleans, and then they'll bus them over here when the ship is sanitized. So New Orleans is going to benefit from 800 to 900 rooms, plus three square meals a day from these 900 sailors that I wish we could accommodate them. I hate losing business. But that's what's happening on the summer of the Gulf Coast with the available occupancy that we have. It's high demand. It's good to see as we try to recover. We're not out of the woods, because I think after the season, we may see a really steeper dip during the offseason than we normally do, but it's really nice to see our guests again and hear from them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. My report will be short. Tailing on what Councilman Barrett was discussing, I wanted to talk to you about the Lighthouse Pier and the damage sustained from Kirstewall. Being that he already discussed it, is there a way to get a projection of what it would cost to update these so that they're more efficient in surviving storms?
Well, I think, you know, the wave action at that, it caught the height above, just a mean high tide contributed to that. You know, there are some options that we would look at, instead of replacing the whole thing, raise the whole thing such that, you know, you're a higher profile. You know, it's in probably the $400,000 range to rebuild it how we would want to, using existing piling structure. But, you know, it all depends on what we can squeeze through MEMA and FEMA through this, you know, through the event. You know, it was declared an emergency, or, you know, a disaster, so we can do some application. But keep in mind, you know, if we want to do the right thing, we pay for it ourselves, and we'll never lose that pier again. But it's, you know, it could be a costly, costly solution.
In light of that, are tidlin grants available?
Could be.
Something like that?
Yep.
With regard to FEMA and MEMA having to replace it back to the condition it was in prior to the storm?
Right.
Tidlet grants would give us the opportunity to exceed that.
That's right. Certainly would be a way to do it, and expand it. I mean, you could replace that pier and with a, one that, if you look at the West Coast and some of the things, big, wider, higher facilities at the end of the pier. Of course, that would require some tidlands, tidlands leases and all of that, but, you know, I'm joking a little bit on that.
But we have a good Secretary of State that will work with us. Mike, we talked about the paving and the infrastructure work in my ward, and Christie sent an email saying that they were planning to meet. This was last week. Do you know if that meeting occurred? I know she's not here today, is she?
We're meeting on pavement management on Thursday with T.L. Wallace and the most set of our pavement management.
Will you come to the mic? And state your name and your position.
Robert Smith, City of Biloxi Engineering. I'm filling in for Christie, Director of Engineering. Yes, we're meeting with T.L. Wallace on Thursday to set a date for that pavement management contract y'all awarded a couple weeks ago, and most of the wards are in your ward, Councilman Demming most of the roads, and there's two roads in Ward 7 also that are under that contract.
Okay, so we'll know something by Friday?
Yeah, and I can shoot y'all an email to let you know the anticipated start date for that.
Okay, thank you. I also discussed her, the curving at Pops Ferry and Sunkist. If you'd ask her to shoot me an update if she's come up with anything for that.
All right. I'll take a look at it and get you an update on that also.
Thank you. That'll conclude my report. We'll move this on.
I have a question. Last week, we talked about allowing Gulf calls downtown Biloxi. You said you were going to look at something, and I think PDA by, did y'all do that? Because I had a few phone calls, wanted to know what we've done, what we upgraded as far as allowing the Gulf calls to be downtown. far as allowing the Gulf calls to be downtown Biloxi.
And I think that's a legal question that would be more, um, appropriately directed to him. I know when I discussed the, the carts, when I looked into it, it was determined that in my ward, the carts had to be street legal, even to be on the roads in my ward, which is a golf court, golf course neighborhood. And so, most of the, most of the residents in my ward converted their carts, or they don't drive them on the, on the public roads. And so, that's the results that I found. I'm not sure if downtown has any different provisions.
I did inquire, the only, uh, one issue is that the cities that have them, they pass special local impravits through the legislature to have them. So, if we were to allow them in downtown Biloxi, we would need to work through the legislature for them to allow us to, to have golf carts in the city.
I mean, it makes it so much easier for these people using, that lives in the city, just from downtown, less cars, not highway, not highway 90, of course, you get down on the back roads.
Do you want to win?
There's got to be something we could do to make the, you know, the people running these things, you might as well let them utilize it. We run them little midget cars, they got it on 90. I mean, Gulf calls are bigger than them. So, I don't know what we need to do, but it's something we need to do to step up and get this done.
Well, we can, we can, the deadline has passed for local impravit, but we can certainly bring that up for next year and look at it.
Councilman Barrett, thank you, Ed. Something to add?
So, is this something we can go ahead and start working on, so whenever it's ready, um, for next year, it's done on our end, and all we have to do is send it to Jackson?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was Peter Abider, Local Council. Thank you, Peter. This will bring us to our public agenda. So, citizens comments, I have 45 minutes total, three minutes per person. If there's anybody on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side, that would like to come to the microphone and speak, please do so at this moment. When you get to the microphone, state your name and your address for the record. Please come on up, sir.
Can I get 15 seconds to get my mask off? All right. My name is John Kemp. My house lives at 178 Hannibal Court. I live in the city of Biloxi. Three years ago, you heard that for the first time. Three years ago. Three years ago, I moved back into my family home to be a volunteer in my city that I love so much. First contacted this office to come be a part of just to hear the way these things work. So, the first thing I found out, you need to be civically engaged. You need to get out and meet the people that represent you. You need to get out and shake hands with the mayor. Now, that's a fist bump. You need to get out and meet the chief of police. You need to get out and meet the fire department. Still working on about two councilmen, but I know a few of your names, including Ms. Newman, who I voted for, and unfortunately, that one vote that you won by got recounted, and sorry you lost that, okay? I am a registered Democrat, but also vote on principle. And I thought you would have represented us very well, so please keep up the fight. I also have to say this. The city of Biloxi is a really shining light. When I'm in Germany, on Google Earth, and the people in Germany look at this city from above, they are amazed at the peninsula. So, when I come back home to my peninsula, and I go in my family home and drink a bark root beer, I'm reminded that people 5,000 miles away don't realize that our home is directly across the street from a Coca-Cola product. What I want to say is that this city is worldwide renowned because of its history, and I am thankful to be a native son of that history. Let me just tell you, mentoring young people is a tough task these days. We have to live by example. I made a promise to myself, if I volunteered and I live by example, then maybe I can influence a few. So, I've been a little bit lucky. In 2017, unfortunately, I happened to be at the intersection of 90, sorry, not, what is that? Esters and Main, when unfortunately, we had perhaps the greatest train bus accident in this city's history. Even though I was out of shape, the grace of God allowed me to jump through that bus and run the first aid on people that I could save. I develop a friendship with those people even to this day. People called me a hero, and as I say, I'm no hero, because a hero would have moved the bus. Another year later, big black guys on national TV dancing for a touchdown dance. Harmel Foods decided to choose this guy to send to the Super Bowl. But for the first time in history in my life, my 33-year-old son from Alabama, my 10-year-old son from Germany, and my 17-year-old best cadet in the state of Mississippi Air Force Cadet, Xavier Kemp, met each other for the first time in Miami, Florida. Harmel Foods filmed this whole story, I told you. I invited my councilman, he declined. The two chiefs came out in support, and for that I'm ever grateful, and that film should release soon. And I thank y'all. This is the best city on the Gulf Coast by far. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Yeah. That's right, we gotta do this now, man. I'm going to duck for a minute.
Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side? Anybody on the left-hand, the, your left-hand side, my right-hand side? Sometimes I gotta look for the L. Anyone in the back that would care to speak? There being none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? I wrote a motion, Paul Tisdale, seconded by Kenny Glavine. Councilman Tisdale, do you have any discussion for any of the items on the consent agenda?
Uh, no, I don't.
Councilman Glavine.
Um, I want to talk a little bit about the Broadwater, uh, issue that's, uh, before us today, and, and I'm excited about it too, about it, Ms. Newman. Uh, I think it's exciting when you talk about not billions of dollars or millions of, I mean, millions of dollars, you're talking about a billion-plus dollars. Uh, that's pretty exciting. Um, but I just want to make sure, as we pass this or vote on it today, I hope it's unanimous, um, that it's, it's clarified that these, uh, tourism tax rebates and incentives are for non-gaming, uh, parts of the project. And that we know what we're passing and talking about as we move it forward, uh, according to, uh, the guidelines by the, uh, legislation that outlines the parameters for, uh, for, qualifying for those rebates. Um, and I, I just wanted to make that statement. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Does anybody else have any discussion on the Broadwater, excuse me, the Broadwater resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just ask a couple of little questions in that area. Um, and you mentioned that it was for the non-gaming, so we're not dealing with anything with site approval or, um, or, or the, uh, commission, the gaming commission, are we? Not dealing with anything like that at all. So, I just wanted to make sure that that, that we didn't have to deal with no lease agreement or, because there are other casinos who are, who has to go through the issues of, uh, lease agreements and all that stuff. And so, I was a little concerned about that, but you've noted that it's strictly just, um, that side of it. Okay, thank you.
Mike Leonard, I'm going to ask you to, to, um, expand on that, or ask
Peter.
Peter to explain the, uh, tax incentive program.
Peter Abider, City Attorney. Uh, in 2007, the legislature passed a tourism, it's called the Tourism, um, Project Incentive Program to incentivize large tourism-type projects. Uh, certain, there are certain money levels that have to, uh, come in, like, for example, the hotel has to be at least $40 million. You have a public golf court that has to have $10 million. You have, uh, a marina has to have a minimum private investment of $10 million. And what it allows, and it is specific in the legislation, it has to all be approved by MDA. They will submit their application to NBA, NDA with their cost estimates. Uh, gaming, uh, gaming facilities are not counted in the overall investment. The portion of the hotel that would be connected to the, to a gaming, uh, facility is not counted. Uh, the scope of this project, though, is so, is so large, there's, um, there's basically $900 million in non-gaming type amenities here. And what that would allow them to do, we know that most of the sales tax, 80, 87% goes to the state?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, of that amount, the state will rebate back 80% of the sales tax that's collected on the property, and they can recover up to 30% of these non-gaming costs, or in 15 years, whatever comes first. And I think their initial estimates are, uh, they won't get to the 30% of these projects just because the sales tax will be large, but it won't be that large. Uh, somewhere between 7% to 10% of these non-gaming costs should be rebated back to them. And while that's going on, the city and the county, the school districts, uh, the property taxes that'll be collected are going to more than offset that as far as the city would be concerned. Uh, but I mean, I think that's, in a nutshell, since 2007, there's been a few on the coast. The stadium was a, uh, tourism tax incentive project. The, uh, existing Margaritaville, which, um, they've applied for it, they're in application for it right now. I believe, um, I'm sure the aquarium is applied for it, and, uh, but it's for a large-scale tourism project, not just for a gaming project.
When you say not just for gaming, gaming is, is actually excluded?
Right. The cost of the, the cost of the gaming facilities are, are backed out of any of the projects.
Of the recoverable tax incentive portion.
It can be part of an overall tourism package project. And, um, I mean, I think I do have, uh, we got TV? I've got just a, a picture of roughly, the golf course will be redeveloped, we're proposing the marina to be redeveloped, uh, an amphitheater, uh, indoor, air-conditioned amphitheater, uh, large hotel. And there is also a casino component, but that's basically, uh, that's less than 10% of the overall project, the casino cost.
When you say less than 10%, you mean square footage or cost?
Well, no, of cost. It's, um, it's a $1.1 billion project, the casino is about 200 million of that.
Is there any more discussion on this matter?
One, one, one question. Um, Peter, you had mentioned a 15-year term, I thought it was a 10-year term.
No, it's 15 years.
So, the, so the, the first, how many, the first year, it's 100, 100% is that?
No, it's, it's not, it's more of a, um, whatever sales tax they send up there, and the sales tax that goes to the state.
Right.
The state will then return back to them as a reimbursement.
Right. How much of that, the first year that's collected and sent to Jackson is going to go back to the developer? Is that 100%?
It'll be, it'll be 80% of what's collected.
Okay, so that's, is that 80% for each of those 15 years, or does it decrease?
No, it's 80% for each. Correct.
Okay, so if, if, after 15 years, they haven't reached their 30% of their total investment of qualifying portions of the project, they're done. But if they hit the 30% prior to the 15 years, they're done as well? Okay.
That's right. And they're investing and financing, of course, 100%. I think, uh...
And, and on, on this, just if I'm correct, is all portions of a project don't necessarily qualify just because it's not casino? It has to, uh, meet certain parameters and, and not just any development qualifies just because it's non-casino? It has to have a certain investment, certain amount in each hotel room and all that kind of thing, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
I mean, a typical hotel just would not qualify for this on its own.
Okay.
Uh, so they, uh, apply strictly for 300,000? You said 30% of 900. So, it's 300,000, the most they can go after?
300.
Have be re-inbated? Re-bated, I mean? You said 30% of the product.
300 million, not thousand. 300 million, not thousand.
Yeah, but I'm just saying 300. It's 900 million products, so I mean, it's 300 million. That's all they applying for, 30% of what you said.
That's great. And all, and all these numbers go through the MDA, they look at everything, they verify. We don't know what their actual, what's actually going to be allowed by MDA, but that's all part of their application that's, that'll be ongoing. And what we're really doing here today is just supporting their right to submit an application to the MDA.
I have one more question. Peter, one more question.
Sure.
On this, MDA just makes a recommendation, the legislature still has to vote on that as well, correct? Or does the MDA approve that?
I think they give MDA the authority to, to vet it through the existing legislation.
Okay.
I, I'd just like to also point out, the project is estimated to create approximately 2,500-plus, uh, jobs. And it's, it's always been the big driver when we've, uh, supported casino legislation, jobs, jobs, jobs. So, it's exciting, really is. Congratulations, Dixie.
Create jobs on both ends, Kenny. You're going to take 1,200 people to build it, you know? You're going to have 2,500 to run. We've got a couple of projects like that around, they hope to get them on a table, get them done. Be another billion-dollar project, just things we've got to keep working on. The mayor's got to stay on top of that.
That's it. Anything further?
Anything further on the, this issue? Councilman Tisdale, do you have any other concerns?
Not a thing, thank you.
Councilwoman Newman? I'm sorry? Councilman Lawrence?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Y'all been waiting for this. I know they brought us this book today after meeting, that's terrible. An audit report, we should have at least a week to read it.
You didn't ask, you weren't asked to vote today, sir, you were just briefed on it.
Say again?
You were not asked to vote on it today, you were just provided a copy and briefed on it.
They got it listed on here. We received it, okay, I received the draft, I didn't receive any numbers, everything here is draft, so I don't know if any of the numbers are right or wrong. That wasn't anything since asked in question, I don't know. I need to read to find out what I can. That's just one thing.
I believe we removed that, didn't we? We removed the resolution accepting the audit. We just briefed you on the audit. It'll come back to you when it's final.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I shouldn't, we didn't have to remove it. That'd been fine, just get the book to us. That's all. I don't put it on at all. I'll tell you, don't put it on there and remove it.
I don't know that we...
What is, uh, the agreement you wanted with the bench? That'd be a W on the bench agreements? Mr. Eliminate more of these benches or?
Mr. President, I, I noticed item 5G is, is still on the consent agenda.
It is.
That we're acknowledging receipt, did we want to remove that from the agenda?
We do. Do we want to?
Do you need a, would you like to entertain a motion at this time?
I will need a motion to amend the agenda.
I would make that motion that we, we remove item G, resolution acknowledging receipt of the municipal audit for fiscal year 2018-19, that we remove it from the agenda at this time.
Was that not done at the beginning?
No, it was not.
We removed items, that was left out of the removal list. So, I have a motion to remove item G, 5G. Do I have a, a second?
I move.
Got a second from, from George Lawrence to remove item 5G from the agenda for today. Any discussion? All in favor, signal with the right, with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Um, do I have a motion to accept the amend, the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So, moved by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Councilman Lawrence, all in favor. Motion carries, the amendment is agended with the removal of item 5G. Good catch. Mr. Lawrence?
Let me go back to W. What did we decide with the benches? Are we removing some of them? A lot of them was in bad shape.
We're removing eight benches in that, in that contract. We extending the contract for another year and removing eight benches.
And those are the ones that was, like, damaged?
Mm-hmm. Most of those benches are either on Division Street where the
None of them are blocking.
Peace Gate project, or they're, they're in the area around Eisenhower. East Gate project or they're, they're in the area around Eisenhower.
None of them blocking the sidewalk or anything where people can't walk around them and that. We made sure that, we had a problem there once before on a little handicap thing. They had the bench right there. So, then the handicap on the sidewalks wasn't useless. It was useless because you couldn't use it. So, I didn't know if we made sure all of them not in the way of the little handicap sidewalk when you get on there and you walk by them and stuff like that.
The agreement gives us the right to remove others during the year. The agreement give us the right to remove other benches during the year if we choose to.
Does that cover everything, Lawrence?
That's it.
Councilman Barrett?
My only question is on W as well. What kind of authority does it give us on these benches throughout the year? Like, most of these things are in terrible shape driving through the city. So, if we drive through and we see one and we notify the owner, hey, this has to be fixed or we're going to remove it in how many days? Or does it indefinite? Can we get some kind of closed deal to where if he doesn't, if we tell him to repair the bench, it's not repaired or replaced in 30 days, we remove it? Because some of these things are just, not only are they absolutely ugly and it's embarrassing for, for tourists to see some of the things, some of these that are sitting out there. They're also, some of them are dangerous. I mean, somebody, some of them are broke off and things like that. So, can we get some kind of wording in there that gives the, gives the owner a certain amount of time to fix the bench or we'll remove it?
Yeah, I think, I think that's in the contract.
Is, okay.
No, just off the top of my head, I think it's, they've got 30 days to respond and repair or whatever and if Right. And then, and then if they don't, then I think we can ding them so many dollars a day for that or ask them to remove it. And I think we have, this list has been amended a number of times over just the past couple of years, removing or moving benches or whatever. So, it's pretty, and I think that's what Mr. Leonard went to get was the contract, but I, I recall that's already in there.
That's just the main thing. I just wanted to make sure that we had the ability to enforce it instead of.
Right. The city has some leverage to, to get those things done.
Reduce those numbers every, you know, every year.
All right, that's all. That's all you have?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Guines? Nothing?
Good.
Councilman Glavin? All right. All I have is, is I just want clarification on the security measure for the library. Just, are we paying for the 56, 5,760, looks like we're paying for future service in July. The other is services that had already been provided to, provided by Swept and Security? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. And that's all I have. We'll move forward with voting on the consent agenda. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any objections to any item on the consent agenda by anyone, including myself? If you'll note that I am in, in objection to V. It's the Just Commutation for the Keesler portion. V is in victory. Thank you. That will take us to code enforcement hearings. There being none, we'll move forward to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Nathan Barrett. Paul Tisdale, any questions?
Not a thing.
Pardon? Would you let the record reflect that Councilman Newman has abstained from FF, that's Frank Frank, Foxtrot Foxtrot? Or any other alphanumeric word that could be used with the word F? Councilman Tisdale? George Lawrence, I know you always have discussion on the routine agenda.
Yeah, Walt? What's the good news this week?
That's some of the worst good news I've gotten in a long time.
How about the pipeline? Anything on the pipeline?
He's talking about a different pipeline.
Yeah, yeah, the money pipeline. You and Smitty got to take out a pipe. We're talking about the money pipeline. But we still above, we above it, right? We got backup money.
60 days ahead with what we're keeping on.
Thank you.
Responding to the, to the question was Walt Rhodey. What is your title, Mr. Rhodey? Infrastructure Program Manager. Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. All in favor of the routine agenda? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to recess?
I want to, I want to go ahead and close this in the memory of Pops Ferry teacher who just passed, Ms. Aggie Course, Aggie Course.
I have a motion by Councilman Guines to close this meeting in the honor of
Aggie Course.
Second.
Seconded by the council. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We are closed or in recess in the name of Ashley. You spell that for the clerk for me?
Thank you.